Oh, I know.
Adam, how often do you change password? Is this going to be a password?
We have to change it for the city.
I've had the same password for what you know. I'd like to call to order the July 6, 2020 Bayport City Council meeting. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Adam, please call the roll.
Mayor's orders.
Here.
Councilmember Paul.
Here.
Councilmember Paulson.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Councilmember Buckley.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. It's nice to have us identified behind these masks. All right, so now that takes us to the approval of tonight's agenda. Does anyone have any questions, changes, or anything that they want to add to the agenda? If not, would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Connie, is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Right. That takes us to our Proclamations, Commendations, Petitions, and Announcements. The June Recycling Award recipient is John McDonald at 455 Main Street. He'll be awarded for recycling efforts with funding made possible by a grant from Washington County. So, thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, for your recycling. That takes us to our Consent Agenda to consider resolution adopting items 1 through 7. The first is June 1, 2020, City Council Regular Meeting Minutes, the June Payables and Receipts, June Building Plumbing Mechanical and Zoning Permits Report, the renewal of a 2:00 AM liquor license permit for Witty's Bar and Grill at 109 Third Street North, confirmation of the city's COVID-19 Preparedness Plan required by Governor Walz's Executive Order 2074, a special event application from Jessica Vick for exercise classes at Barker's Alps Park, July 1 through 31, 2020, an appointment of election judges for the statewide primary election on August 11, 2020. Any questions, comments, or changes to tonight's consent agenda? If not, would someone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll move to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. This evening, we have a public hearing. It's the overview of the city's municipal separate storm sewer system, the MS4 program materials, and annual report. And Matt, please present.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor indicated, there are two portions to this report. One is just to give you an overview of the MS4 program that we are a part of, and two is to do the annual report, which is a requirement of the general permits on a yearly basis. So, the city of Bayport is officially listed as a small municipal separate storm sewer system. That's where the MS4 comes in. On March 16, 2017, is actually when that general permit was issued to the city. This SEH did most of the legwork on this original portion, and since then, city staff has been putting together the separate pieces of the whole permit. A component of the permit is the Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. The primary goal of the plan is to restore and maintain the chemical, physical, and biological integrity of waters within the city through the management and treatment of urban stormwater runoff. Essentially, we want the runoff from the city to be treated and maintain, worst case, going to, you know, our Pero Creek and St. Croix River, essentially. The Pollution Prevention Plan consists of a combination of best management practices and also operating procedures. This can include education, maintenance, control techniques, system designs, and engineering methods used throughout the city. And I'll get more into that and how that works with all the control measures. So, the NPDS permit requires the plan to consist of six minimum control measures. They're listed out on your memo, but I'll go through them, too. The first one is public education and outreach. Essentially, the city is required to provide education to the public about where stormwater goes, what you can do to help prevent stormwater runoff. The city is actually contracted with, or partnered and contracted with, the East Metro Water Resource Education Program. It's part of the Washington County Observation District. It's short, called MRAP, essentially. Angie Hong, you may have heard of her, seen her in the Stillwater Gazette. She's the main lead person who runs MRAP. She happened to actually be in Lakeside Park the other day doing some stormwater stuff for kids when they came down there. So, it's kind of a pilot project for her for that one. I forget what it was off the top of my head. But, so, we contract with them essentially to provide the education that's our requirement. So, and essentially, we just have to advertise it, or put it on our website, or do mailers of the education materials and programs that they provide.
Are they the ones that put on that, like, hunt for the who polluted the river?
That was it. Yep, yep, that was it. Exactly.
It was a really cute little program. I don't know if you got to check it out, but...
Yeah, we didn't really advertise it very much. We had asked her, and she's like, "No, let's not advertise it this time because of all the COVID stuff," and she wanted to kind of keep it small for just people who had gone down there.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
So, the second portion of the plan is public participation and involvement. Essentially, that's kind of what we're doing tonight. The city is required to annually hold a public hearing on the plan to solicit input and provide an overview of the annual report. The city is also required to provide written procedures for the receipt and consideration of all public input. So, essentially, the public can provide input at any point in time throughout the year. That can be found on our city website, too. Third portion of the plan is illicit discharge detection and elimination. The purpose of this program is to detect and eliminate sources of pollution to the MS4. This is a pretty multifaceted program. We have employee training, we have response procedures, reporting procedures. We've created storm sewer mapping to see essentially where, to give direction to the storm sewer system of where it could potentially be coming from. So, mostly what this wants to hear is say that there is, we'll take like an oil spill or something, a small oil spill, that all of a sudden is in Pero Creek. So, we want to be able to follow it back up to Pero Creek and see where the source is. So, a lot of this is, some of it is mostly employee training, just to keep an eye open for some of this stuff. So, they'll get yearly training on it, what to look for, how to proceed if found, things like that. Number four is construction site stormwater management. This program has been going on for a couple of years because it was one of the original requirements of the plan. It's actually based on the enforcement of our, one of our Chapter 48 of the city ordinance. The goal of this program is to ensure that the contractors and developers are controlling stormwater runoff from construction sites mainly. The Inspiration Neighborhood is a good example of this. Since that neighborhood is big enough development, they're required to follow that ordinance. We actually have an outside contractor, Jeff Brouwer. He's a local consultant who has education in this type of work, and so, he actually inspects up there roughly once a week for any stormwater runoff. So, the requirements up there would be, just to pick a few, like, silt fence, to make sure silt fence is in place. Make sure that lots are getting seeded with grass seed so that they don't have runoff on them, stuff like that. Then, the post-construction stormwater management, MCM5. That program includes maintenance of constructed stormwater facilities and the requirements for private stormwater facilities. A good example of this is Anderson Windows, the north part. The door plant recently put in an infiltration basin. It was kind of in correlation with their new development of the, that new window portion they put in. So, what we do is make sure that infiltration basin has an easement to it so that we can come in and take a look at it, have the ability to inspect it, and then also have an easement just in case they're not taking care of it. We would have the ability to have a contractor go in there, fix anything that's wrong, and then charge them back. So, all of that has, the easements recorded at the county, they sign a document saying that they're going to maintain it, and then we would provide inspections at some point. Then, MCM6, that's Municipal Operations, Best Management Practices, and Standard Operating Procedures. This one is primarily for the city infrastructure. So, it looks at things like, we have the salt shed in the back of Public Works, just as an example, just to make sure that there's not runoff coming from that. We also have pond assessments. We also have stormwater best management practices and inspections. So, we have all this stormwater infrastructure. We want to make sure that it's operating correctly. That's what that one is overviewing on. There's also employee training in there and documentation. So, finally, there's an annual report to the MPCA that has been attached. So, if you look through the annual report, or at least this one, there's only three sections that have been filled out, 3, 4, and 5. That's because that's all that's required for the 2019 reporting year. Starting in 2020, all sections will be required by the city. That's just, it's a, it's an incremental implementation from 2017. So, so, starting this next year, we'll have even more work to do on this. So, with that said, as indicated, staff is just recommending that the city hold the public hearing to allow any input from the public. No written comments have been received at this point, and it doesn't look like anybody's here to comment physically. So, there is no formal action that is required afterwards. Stand for questions?
Thank you. Do we still need to formally open the public hearing?
Yep.
Okay. So, this time, we'll pause the presentation. I'll formally open the public hearing. If anyone would like to come and address the council, this would be the time that they would come forward, state their name and address for the record, and any questions or concerns. But, we do not have any guests in our audience this evening. So, with that, would someone like to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make a motion in closing.
Thank you, Connie. Is there a second?
All second.
Thank you, Michelle. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Stand for questions from the council to Matt.
I have a question just about, you know how you see those adopt a storm drain programs other places? Is that something that would be done with this program?
Yep, absolutely. We haven't really gotten into that yet with like Angie or anything like that. I know it's pretty big in Stillwater. We actually had a resident who actually signed up for it, I think up on 6th Street.
Okay, and I saw a post from someone on 4th Street, kind of telling people to watch their own storm drains.
Oh, really?
No cleaning.
Yeah. Yeah, so, Bayport has technically not gotten into that. It'd be nice, I've been pretty busy just doing this stuff and getting other things done, but here in the next year or two, to talk with Angie about doing that. Because we actually have a lot of drains that have issues, you know, just stuff on them, essentially. And so, if somebody could start up like a compost pile from like the leaves and dirt and whatever that collects on them, that'd be great. The one that we do have, he's like, "Yeah, I signed up for this," and, but it's not really in Bayport. So, I don't know how he ended up signing up for it. But, so, we talked, and he's actually just making piles because his has a lot of sediment that comes to his, and so, he makes piles like after a big rainfall if we don't get out there right away, and then we just collect the pile for him.
Or he just leaves it on the street?
He just leaves it on the street, yeah.
Does it come on the south end of town? Is it?
Nope.
Oh, that's pretty bad in some places.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
But absolutely, that could be part of, yeah, program. Yep. So, eventually, we, the hard thing to measure would be, we do get credit for collecting some of this sediment. One of the aspects of this is that, like through street sweeping, there's requirements for trying to reduce the amount of like phosphorus and sediment that goes into the St. Croix. So, we're required to do some of that. So, we actually have to show that we are doing that. So, one of those will be street sweeping, but other ones, it'd be interesting to know if we could get a credit for cleaning drains and stuff like that.
Sarah had an article in one of our newsletters about it, but I don't know if it's ended up progressing very far. So, yeah, we do have some that are troublesome, that's for sure.
Matt, how much time do you spend on this program? Is this something that's really, or you get kind of a template that you start filling out, or just?
Yeah, so I...
Feel for how much time you spend?
I spent a lot of time pulling this together. So, if you're really interested in any of this, which I'm sure you are, you can go to the city website. You can go to the city website. You can go to the city website and see, under MS4, if you click under that, under City Information, there's all of these MCMs, Minimum Control Measures, that are listed there, and then the program is with it. So, there's probably, if I had to guess, 100 pages worth of material there. Now, like any good city, I stole some of it from other cities.
Of course.
Because they all had some good stuff out there. But, it was a long time coming. I mean, it's been since 2017 to put it together. So, and a lot of it, too, was like GIS mapping. There's requirements for storm sewer mapping, and storm sewer BMP is Best Management Practices, and ponds, and there's a lot of stuff that went into it.
Second question is, I'm a representative for the middle St. Croix Livestock Management Organization. How much overlap? Or it seems like there would be some overlap and maybe some resources that could be shared a little bit, or is there some entity that needs to be that way, or?
Yep, there's absolutely some overlap. They do like drainage basin areas, and so, I definitely use some of their information in this, and I use some of their knowledge, too. Mike Isensi was a good one for some of this because he had been around a while. So, I definitely use them as a resource, absolutely. And they play a big role, too, because some of the requirements that we have are to reduce our phosphorus load and stuff like that. So, the work up on Second Avenue North up there, that counts towards some of our reductions, and they'll be playing a big role, mostly in grant funding and stuff like that, to find other places to reduce our phosphorus loading.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Okay, and no actions required?
No actions required.
Okay, super. Thank you so much. So, that takes us onto our item of unfinished business, which is an update on the land and water legacy conservation project. So, Adam.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to give an update on the land and water legacy project. I'm going to give a status of where we are at with that. We're in Phase 2. As you can see, if you remember, if you recall, just for the public, Phase 1 was coming up with the project scope. I'm sorry, Phase 2 was actually the land acquisition. So, we did complete that, seems like forever ago, but it was last October when we completed that phase. Now, we're in Phase 3, which is the improvement planning and completing some of the acquisition requirements. And so, with that, with that, in the document that was included, did you have the task list of all the various parts to this, the various tasks that need to be done? There was one deadline, if you recall, as part of the land acquisition, when we got the grant funding from the DNR. We had to have public access. Firstly, we had, within the first year, we had to have all the land, all the structures demolished and removed. We did complete that, and so, that has been done. That isn't, that's listed here, but that timeline, we didn't put that date in there. But, that has been done. Miller Excavating, Matt coordinated that, and it went fairly well, I believe. There was only one small, I won't call it issue, but one thing that they found was an underground tank that we had to also remove, but it wasn't a major issue. We just didn't know about it when we did our initial site visit. The only remaining deadline was supposed to be within one year of the acquisition. We had to have permanent access provided to the public along with the funding signs. The signs are for, to let the public know that publicly, public tax dollars were used in this project. The state requires that as part of their grant funding. And so, that, because due to the COVID-19, that deadline was originally supposed to be one year, that's been moved out to 2022. It was going to be 2020 this fall, but now it's November 12, 2022. They're very understanding that some of these projects aren't moving along as fast, so, they've made extensions to all their deadlines for these types of projects.
Is that for the permanent access, or the signage, or both?
For both.
And we have that in writing?
Yes, yeah. It's been, Assistant Minister Taylor has been communicating with, say, Grant Audrey, was her name, the grant specialist for the DNR.
All right, so, it's documented?
Yes, very well. The... We currently have a, we do have public access to it. It's not, there's nothing there. We do, we do control that public access, so it is locked at the moment, but we don't have to have it open until November of 2022. Once things kind of get a little closer to normal, we do want to spend more time out there, perhaps making it available to the public before, before the permanent access and all the site improvements, if those happen, are done, just because it is a nice, for those of you who have had the chance to go walk the property, it is a nice scenic riverfront area. So, we're still working on that. We don't have any specific timeframe for that, or we don't know when that'll happen, but we do have access to it, the easement that we had previously. One of the other things that we're, so, with the list of the tasks, and I'll just quickly kind of go through some of them. As part of the demolition, we were, it was suggested, I don't know if it was necessarily required, but it was suggested that we did do the Phase 2 archaeological survey. With the initial archaeological survey, if you recall, found some ICE company foundations, and we were not removing those, but they suggested if you're going to be doing any demolition around them, you should have somebody on site to document that and do those Phase 2. So, we were able to do the Phase 2 under budget from the original quote for the Phase 1. We were able to add that on. We have not got the full report from that yet, but we were notified that there weren't any issues. The first report took a few months for the archaeologists to compile. So, we are still waiting that, but there's no, there's no deadline for that, so that we're very, very happy with. As I said, the demolition is done. The, right now, one of the things that we're just finishing is the topographic survey, and SEH has been hired to do that. We've got a couple quotes from a couple different firms, and what that'll allow us to do is identify where the permanent access is, will be best located, and then we'll also be able to use that data, that survey data, in formulation of any improvement plans going forward with that. So, we wanted to make sure that it was comprehensive enough so we don't have to go back and resurvey things for the future when we want to potentially do improvements. One other thing that we had to do because we found out, well, we kind of guessed it would happen, was it's, it's identify the wetlands. We had to do a wetland delineation, so we were working with, working with the Water Conservation District, I believe.
Yep.
Or NSDH. So, that's, we're still, we haven't, that hasn't been completed, but they are working on that. That, as you see, it should be done later this month, and the survey, John, do you happen to have any update? I know Sarah reached out to you last week, and it was forthcoming soon.
Yeah, the dates in this report here are still accurate.
Okay, so, we should be...
I think it was done before the dates of this report.
Okay, so, we should again add that in the next couple weeks.
Can I interrupt just for, so, you know, it was talked about a possible boat launch. Is that like something that would be identified in this?
Yeah, that was the, so, part of the, the idea that we had come up with in order to get the grant funding was to come up with a use, and one of the uses that we proposed was relocating the current public boat launch to this property. And, so, that is still in the works.
Possibility.
We don't have any, obviously, hardcore plans for that. We, of course, funding has to be determined as well for that large, you know, significant project.
Yep.
Just jump into the end where it talks to the Adopt a Master Site Plan. That is part of the, we'll need to be doing that over the next year. And we have just one thing to keep in mind. All these where we say like anticipated for November, anticipated for December towards the end, these are going along with, you know, just as we go. We're not, we haven't hit pause on progressing. One, we want to make sure that we meet the deadlines we have to. There are certain things that we, like the management, the Wildlife Management Plan, the National Resources Management Plan, we have to be working on that. You can't just not. That was the county's stipulation, that we had to develop a resources plan. And so, we've been, we've been working on that with the WCD and the county. But, where it says Adopt a Master Site Plan in anticipated for December, that's to be able to use, not use, but use basically what we are planning on, what we'd like to have done, and that doesn't mean we have to execute or implement that, you know, start the construction right away, but that's, that's over the next several months throughout the rest of the year, working on coming up with that plan. And again, that's just something, there's no hard deadline, but we need to keep working towards that. So, kind of jumping back a step here, as I said, the, so, the Habitat Management Plan, Washington County's the one who wants us to do that, and Sarah's been working very closely with June on that, and we just need a document that we're progressing on it, that we're working on it, and not letting it just go off the radar. And then, the, as I said, the permanent access, we're working with Anderson Windows. Andy, Council Pratt, and myself have been working with Anderson's attorneys and Anderson's liaison for this project on identifying where that permanent access should be. One of the things that we were waiting for kind of went up, we did a lot of the initial work, but we need to know the actual legal description of where it's going to be cited. We weren't able to complete the easement document without knowing exactly where it is. So, that's one of the things that the survey will also be able to allow us to accomplish. So, there, so that, once we get the survey done, then we can discuss it with Anderson and identify where the best location for where they want to give us easement access and what works best for us. So, they're, they're well aware, they're in step with our, the proposed master plan of relocating the boat launch, and that was, so, we're all on the same page. Moving forward, yeah, sorry.
So, all of the line items, there's no, I mean, it switches to 2020... So all of the line items, there's no, I mean, it switches to 2021 at the last two line items, but all of these other items are anticipated to be completed by the end of 2020? Is that correct?
Be able to, yes, so that would be something that we'll be able to, and some of this was identified, you know, pre-COVID. So some of these are taking longer. We do want to have, you know, the public engagement. That was supposed to happen in the spring, early on, and that ended up not happening. We haven't had any open houses. So that was, that's something that we'll want to, depending on what the status of society is, we'll have to get that information out and get more feedback and input from the public. That's something very important that we want to take into consideration.
So reviewing the terms of the existing access easements and adjacent. It says to be completed by November 12th.
2022.
It says it has to be done by 2022, but what year are you saying in column under status? Are you saying that it will be done by 2022 or this year in advance?
The permanent access?
Yeah. I was trying to understand, because there's no years attached to this.
Right, the original is November, the permanent access that the DNR required, it was November 12th to 2020.
Right. So we have that extended, but what are you saying in column one?
Oh, I'm sorry, that, well, the easement, the only thing it's really waiting on is the survey information, so we can identify where that is. The deadline that's listed there, November 12th, 2022, that's, that's the deadline.
That's the outside.
So before, when it says to be completed by November 12th, that's 2022. That's the hard deadline. We expect, we anticipate it to be much sooner.
I just think, I'd like to see this redone with the actual years in here as well, because they all say
Between the two, okay.
July 15th, but it doesn't say which year. And then the next one says November.
I'm sorry, the rest of them are all this year.
Okay.
The only one that's 2022 is the, that permanent access.
And then there's the two last ones that are 2021.
Yes.
Yeah.
But those are identified.
If I can jump in, when you mentioned it previously about the two-year pushback on the deadline, and I don't want to put the city in a pickle, given that two-year extension we got, but I'd be really disappointed if we have to wait that long for the public to have access to it. So I think it's important that we have this and we get it turned over to the public in some way, shape, or form as soon as possible.
Right.
That's just my opinion on the matter.
And so we do anticipate it'll be done this year in the next few months. Like I said, the survey we should get in the next, this month, and then it's just a matter of putting in the, making sure that we're both still okay with where we agree, based on the survey results and that document will be recorded.
Okay, I just think it should be noted in here, the years, because some of them have them, some don't. So I'd just like to make sure that we have it.
I will make that note.
Super, thank you.
So that, then after, after that permanent access, like I said, the, depending on where it is, if it's, because all we have to do is provide a physical entrance to the park. We don't have to, the entrance doesn't have to be ADA compliant. We don't have to have a parking area, but that's obviously something that we'd like to be able to offer. That, that'll be done, that should be done this year. And that just may mean making the, basically cutting a hole in the fence that's currently there. And for everybody's information, the area that we're discussing with Anderson Windows is that long parking lot, or what we refer to as the landing, or the airstrip, like the landing strip. That's where, somewhere within there, kind of in the northern part of that, is where we were discussing with them and going to put that in. And then they were going to actually allow us to use some of the parking area as parking for the, and travel area for the traffic. So that's, we could just cut a hole, and we might, there's a ditch there, so we may have to bring in some gravel or something, some way to make it, people physically able to get in there. But that would be, that would suffice, that would meet the deadline for a permanent access as well. So we have, we have a lot of flexibility with that, but we will have access to the public this year.
That's great.
Yeah, so. Then the, that same, that same deadline, we also have to do the signs. Again, I mentioned the signs, that's just for, to eliminate the confusion, where it says to, to, sorry, to completed by November 12th type O, that's 2022 as well.
Okay.
Great.
Then, let's see what else there is. Yeah, so the, the concept site plan, you know, we have the idea that we had proposed that we actually worked with LOX on developing that initially. And they're the ones we've used for our park plans, park planning, if you recall. So we'll be reaching out to them again to follow up on this. We've been in contact with them, but Anderson Windows has also used them. They have, they use them for their, a lot of their projects. So we're discussing with Anderson about cost sharing, that master site plan development, when we get to that point. But again, these are just essentially what, what we are planning to do, moving forward at a normal pace. And so then the, again, at the end of the year, beginning of the new year, hopefully sometime we'll be able to reengage with the public one way or the other, in a better fashion. And then that, once we're, once we know what we're going to do, how we're going to pay for it, what it's going to look like, then we will come up with the next phase. That'll be the Phase Four of actually, you know, doing those improvements. Down below, we, I listed the expense summary for the year. This was the majority of what we had come up with when we were discussing about the state's costs. Out of the 1.745 million, this is the city's share for this year. If you recall, I believe I had 100,000 in the CIP for this year. But that, so this, we weren't sure exactly when this would happen, but that's the remaining. And some of that we just haven't been billed yet, the work has been done. But either we haven't got the final report, or like the archaeological survey, or the archaeological report, we haven't got the bill of invoice for yet. With that, I stand for any questions on this?
So the public can't see what we're looking at for the expense summaries?
This is, this is part of the public agenda, if they download it from the council.
I know, but I'm just saying, if you're watching on TV or whatever,
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
You might want to know that they, we've paid about 65,500, and we have about 1,800 left to spend. Right, okay, and you just budgeted 100, so.
Yes, so the, and I'm sorry, thank you for pointing that out. The, the demo was a very significant portion of that, as you, if you recall. So, any other questions?
Just that it would be, I think it'd be super if project, if all of, you know, all of the phases were, are they all documented somewhere, like Phase One, Phase Two, Phase Three?
Yes.
In the, in the same format?
Yeah, well, we had, Phase One wasn't documented this way, but Phase Two, we went through the same, so we can have it all available.
Yeah, it'd be great, at least if there'd be a summary for Phase One, just a couple of lines at least. Then adding in Phase Two, Phase Three with the years attached. And, and then in the summary, the expense summary, it'd be great to have it detailed to Phase One, Two, and Three, so that, and then totals.
Sure.
So that, that would all just be in one final document. Wasn't there a, wasn't there a hard deadline from the county on the master plan? And I just want to make sure if there was, that we are meeting that deadline.
There was no deadline, there was no date, it just had to be done. It was just a requirement that it had to be done. And so that's, when I had, I had Sarah double check on that, and she said, June just said that we have to be documenting, showing, making a good faith effort to work with them to develop it. So if we stop taking emails, going to meetings, phone calls, they're going to start saying, and it hasn't been completed, then we're going to have to, it won't get to that, but, yeah, they've been, of course, they've been, it hasn't been going as easy, a lot of it can be done, you know, over email and phone call. And there have been a couple site visits out there with staff and the county to, to work on that.
Yeah, if there could even be, like, when we plan, you know, when, if there's a deadline or what the guidance is, and then when we plan to, because it looks like we're getting some things done ahead of time of maybe what is anticipated, which is great. I just know in the wording of that particular contract, that it was kind of particular. So I, I just, it looks like everything's great, and we're moving forward, and we're going to be even ahead. I'd just like to see that clearly documented in one document.
I'll go, and I'll go back and triple check, but, yeah, my understanding is that...
And then please just make sure that those documents are coming from the county in writing.
Right.
Okay, and maybe bundle that all in one place, Andy, if you can make sure that that's all together. But very good, looks good. Any other questions from the council? Okay, all right, well, thank you. No action required on our part for that line item today. Okay, new business, item number one, consider a donation request from the Greater Stillwater Area Chamber of Commerce to fund additional resources in response to COVID-19 health pandemic. So Adam, back to you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The, every year, or for the last, starting last year, previous years, we were a member of the Stillwater, the Greater Stillwater Chamber of Commerce. And with some legal advice from the Attorney General's Office, that we were made aware of, cities are not allowed to be dues-paying, dues-paying members. So, but we are able to give a donation to nonprofit charities, which the, not nonprofit, nonprofits, not nonprofit charities. And the Attorney General did specifically say that Chambers of Commerce are eligible for this donation that the city can make. It's a charitable contribution, sorry, not a charity. The, so last year, we made a $500 donation, charitable contribution to the chamber. This year, like many organizations, the chamber is, has been negatively impacted by the financial hardships due to COVID-19. And they, they sent out a letter to all the cities, and I believe other organizations in the area, in the valley, wanting to basically do a fundraiser, try to solicit additional funds to help the chamber out. For the council's information, if you haven't heard, there were, there are some chambers who have decided to either merge with other, other chambers just in order to survive, and there's been some chambers that have completely basically gone out of business. One of the, the, Greater Stillwater Chamber, our chamber, they have, during the COVID-19, they have made all their resources and services available to all businesses. And they, they've been working quite, quite hard advocating for the small businesses that they represent and all the, all the businesses in the valley. Whether or not, sorry, retry, whether or not the businesses were a member of the chamber, they made all the resources available. And I know the director, Robin Anthony, is working tirelessly on trying to, trying to keep things going and help, help the business community. So with their, with their fundraising request, I know that Oak Park Heights, I haven't heard, but still a lot where they were supposed to be discussing it last week, I believe. But some of the other cities in our area who are members, not members, but associated with the chamber are making charitable contributions larger than their normal contribution. As I said, last year, we donated $500, and this year, we do have money that is available through the CARES Act for the public's information. That was the first stimulus package that the federal government passed to help local communities and some businesses. And Bayport did get a amount that will be able to use, some of that is eligible to give to nonprofit organizations, such as the Chamber of Commerce or other charities. And staff is, we just, we just were notified that that money will be available. The amount of money is based on the city's population, it's not an amount that the city requested. The state legislature was in charge of getting the money and allocating it to the various communities. Those donations to Chamber of Commerce and the other nonprofits are not directly from the city's coffers, the city's general fund. They would be anything above the 500, because we already budgeted for that, will be taken out of, or potentially is eligible to be taken out of the CARES Act funding that we got. I'll, I'll talk more about the CARES Act funding later with the council, but staff does believe that there's a value that the chamber provides to the business community in Bayport and the area. And so we do recommend making something in addition to our budgeted $500 donation. I did not put a dollar amount in here, like, I know Oak Park Heights donated $1,000. I don't know what their normal donation would be, but I think that would be appropriate. Speaking for staff, I think that would be appropriate an amount. So it'd be $500 on top of our budgeted donation. Any other funding, because staff is still coming up with potential use programs for the use of those CARE funds, the CARE Act funds, and we can revisit this later in the year if there's still a need. But I think because we're going to be making our donation now, we can go and, now would be the time to make some other kind of additional, but we can make any future contributions at another discussion if council so chooses.
Awesome. And so I'll have to defer to you later if I should recuse myself or not, but I'm a, I'm a board member for the chamber. And so what has happened is that our income to support our, the different educational programs that we do for businesses, as well as, you know, providing information out, as the last few months have proven, all of that funding for the staff to keep it going is done typically through events. And those events have obviously been impacted significantly this year, which has really eaten into the amount of revenue that the chamber is able to bring in to sustain, not only the rent that they're paying, but also, and it's a minimal staff. I mean, there's, I think that we have one full-time and two to three part-time people at various levels of hours. And they've reduced their hours during this to try to accommodate as well. But that's, that is why they're circling back and asking for additional contributions, is because that's the only real revenue source that we have. We can't, you know, it's, it's, that's it. So we still hope to have the Gulf Outing yet this summer and the Fall Arts Festival, but the summer, the Spring Showcase and a couple of other items were canceled, which has eaten into that revenue stream. So that's the feedback or a little bit more information. I thought it was nice. I know that this, the team worked really, like, overtime, collecting government information of, you know, the impacts of, of what businesses could, could and could not do in the various phases of closing down and reopening, and then also just being an advocate to the state of, you know, the state of readiness of the business, the local businesses. So, and offering that to members and non-members. We also, oh, there's also the revenue from dues, but of course, many businesses have been impacted by the overall COVID. So the amount of businesses and their, their availability to stay as members because of their revenue impacts have been created shortfall as well. So, so that is, but.
Well, I just want to add that Robin was really great at sending me updates on COVID things and small business grants and loans. So I did appreciate that. We're not a member right now, but I kind of weekly would get things from her during the COVID, you know, for help.
Did you have to request it, or did she just start to do it?
No, she just would fire them off, and then if I had something, I did have a couple questions about grants and stuff, and she'd get back to me within a day.
That's really good to hear.
Yeah. No, I didn't request, I mean, Susan told me if it happened to her public, probably was a hold of hers. She was sending things out to me, so.
Yeah, and the chamber is a super important entity, especially right now. I mean, we need them to help us. I think they do a really good job promoting Stillwater. I would like to see them do a better job helping us and our businesses too. That would be my only tiny complaint. I love the, you know, the Told to Topics thing, and how they get everyone engaged in the civics and everything else going on too. So I'm, I'm up for an extra contribution, especially just coming out of our CARES Act funding, but I don't want to get carried away until we know they're actually going to help us a little bit more specifically. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I feel like I'm giving them.
I think these organizations, to me...
I think these organizations, to Michelle's point, are really important. And, uh, during this, these kinds of, uh, challenges, it's important to help small organizations like this, um, jump in and be able to, um, help businesses like Connie's, um, get through it. So, uh, personally, I think a thousand dollar donation is, uh, money well spent on our part to that organization.
Being the state doesn't recognize these, this organization, but we can utilize the CARES money. Is there a recommendation from the state how we should allocate or distribute that money on a how?
Thank you, C- for me. Thank you, Councilor Buckley. Um, no, there's, there's no hard and fast. Uh, that's what, I've been to a webinar and we've been getting, we've been working with, uh, metro cities and the leading metro cities to get more guidance. The federal government has given out, uh, quite a bit of guidance on what is eligible and what's not, but it's very vague guidance. It's not, uh, it's not detailed. Um, they, they do, there are some suggestions. And I know the, the various cities all throughout the state are talking to each other as well as to what type of programs are coming up. Um, if you recall, their, uh, Bayport was not able to do it, but there are some cities out there that created a loan program for some of their small businesses right when, uh, the pandemic hit. And, uh, one of the things that some of the cities now are doing is more of a grant program for some of those small businesses instead of a loan. Um, our financial resources, we just weren't big enough to make, offer loans to various businesses, but, uh, potentially with, with CARES Act funding, since that is the, the purpose of that funding, uh, from the federal government and the state, that's, you know, that would be appropriate. Uh, staff is looking at that and getting, uh, information from other programs that are existing that are being created. Um, the, i- it's basically any, the, whatever business or charity that is a recipient, an end recipient of this, um, they're under the same guidance or the same requirements that, uh, the city or the county or the state would be under as far as if it documented, has to be related to COVID-19. Um, this money, uh, and we can talk a little more about it now, I guess. The money that the city will be getting, it's, it's an all or nothing. Like the state was given the funds from the federal government. They identified how it's going to be allocated, again, based on percentage. Um, and that, the, the percentage was because Minneapolis and Ran-, uh, Hennepin and Ramsey County, the two largest counties, were based. They, they got their money based on, because they're the most populous, based on the population. And so metro cities and major Minnesota cities really advocated for, well, that should be, you know, per capita for all this, all the local governments, um, to make it equitable. So that's, we, we get all the money. We did certify that we will take the money. Um, anything we don't spend, um, out of our allotment will go to the county in November. And then if the county, they have a, like 30 days to use the remainder. And then whatever they don't spend, and they're getting their own share, whatever they don't spend, that then gets turned back to the state, for the state to finish using it. Um, as, as they haven't, uh, th- there have been talks about, uh, Chambers of Commerce being one of the recipients. Um, but most of the, most of the nonprofit discussions are more of the, uh, the more typical charitable organizations, uh, such as the, you know, we have Figure Common thread, Valley Outreach, um, you know, Goodwill, some, some of those other, uh, typical charities as opposed to just the nonprofit.
Would we be having those discussions maybe at a future council meeting?
Yes. So I hope to have in August, um, have that program available so we can start. We have until, essentially until November to allocate, to distribute some of that funding. Um, and we would want to have an application process where we obviously reach out to people, make sure they're aware that this program is available. They have to apply, so it has to be all documented as to why they're applying, what they're going to do with it. Um, it can't be used for tax revenue shortfall, budget shortfall, or anything. Um, it's really, it can be used for equipment, uh, both technology and, uh, physical equipment for the cities that have to deal with. It can be, uh, used for some unemployment costs. Um, and I, I believe workers' comp is not included because there's a separate provision for that. Um, but any, uh, uh, leave, um, that had to be covered, um, basically any cost that the city has incurred for these other businesses, um, it can't just be, you know, revenue shortfall. You know, the business wasn't open, so they did make X dollars that they were budgeting on. We can't pay them to be closed. Um, but any expenses that they've had to incur in providing access to their employees, that type of thing, um, that, that is eligible.
What about expenses related to like expanding their outdoor space because of the restrictions?
Those costs would be terrible. Yeah. So, and so the same with, you know, anything that the city would have had to do.
So if the city decides to donate a certain amount of money to the Chamber, can, can we revisit that again, like you said, in November for other needs? And if we do have money available, we can donate more?
Yes. Yeah. So, uh, what we, like I said, we were just notified that the funding actually was going to be available on how. Um, and so over the next two months, months or so, um, we'll have to come up with where we are going to, where we're thinking we're going to potentially expend it, you know, basically a budget for that. Um, step up from our budget, that's also here. Um, but then, you know, we don't want to, well, just for sake of discussion, the Chamber gets, you know, $250,000 and then, you know, what business A gets, you know, $500 and business B gets, you know, a thousand. And then the money's gone. It's, we want to make sure that, you know, so some of it, we'll have to have an application process and then we can make sure that everybody who needs it is getting, getting. So we can, we have until, like I said, until November. So the November city council meeting, hypothetically, we could make our last remaining, we want to do this. Then, that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And I, I'd love to hear ideas. I, I mean, I've also voiced it as a board member that I'd like to see Bayport be, you know, get a little bit more attention, but I welcome, and the, the board would always welcome ideas. I mean, I think that we have meeting space here that maybe could be, you know, bring people to Bayport and see what we have to offer. I think anytime that you bring people into the city, just that they're looking around.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so there might be different opportunities, but I, we welcome ideas.
Yeah, they used to do the barbecue down at the X Park.
Yeah. It didn't necessarily pan out. You know, every, every event has to be also a, you know, profit maker. And so, but yeah, different things could definitely be explored. So, and it's one of those organizations also that the more you put in as a business owner, the more you get out of it as well. So, um, as far as the different services and classes and, and, um, Leadership in the Valley is a program that they, we just started. So there's, um, different coffee talks and toast and topics and mixers and all kinds of ribbon cuttings, lots of different activities along with all the education that they've been doing during this process. So.
I said one other thing, uh, it wasn't a condition, um, but it was a suggestion that we wanted to make, um, that the Chamber continues, at least during the pandemic, continue to support the other businesses that are non-members and make better resources available, like it happened. Um, that was something that we thought, you know, again, it's not a condition, but, you know, basically say we do appreciate it and if you can continue that for the time being, we'll continue to appreciate it.
So I do need to ask, should I recuse myself when we go to a vote?
You're not personally benefiting from it. Um, so it's, I don't, you're not legally required to. You're more than welcome to if you choose, but you're not required to.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, Jen.
I'll move to authorize a monetary donation in the amount of $1,000 to the Greater Stillwater Area Chamber of Commerce to fund additional resources in response to COVID-19 health pandemic.
Thank you, John. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Connie. And because it is, um.
Roll call, Madam Mayor. Councilor Dahl.
Aye.
Councilor Carlson.
Aye.
Councilor Hanson.
Aye.
Councilor Buckley.
Aye.
Mayor St. Louis.
I really, I, I, I do believe.
As all.
Thank you very much. Um, next item. And forgive me, I keep taking my glasses off, but these masks don't make it easy to see. So our next item is to consider awarding a bid for sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. So that takes us back to Matt.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, um, as the mayor indicated, this is for awarding sanitary sewer cleaning and televising. Um, as you might recall, the last month, we were, um, asked to solicit bids for this work. Uh, this re-, um, bids came in today. That's why they're not in your packet, to give the contractors a little more time to, uh, hand the bids in. Uh, this city received four bids, actually. Bids ranged from $47,840 all the way to $187,000. Um, the city estimate was actually $87,012. So they came in pretty far under, the low one came in pretty far under city, uh, estimate, which is great.
What was our estimate?
Eighty-seven, zero, one, two. So, um, those are all with the alternate part included. And so the winning bidder, the lowest responsibly, the lowest responsible bidder was Vizius Sewer, which we have used in the past, um, quite frequently. Um, their bid was, again, $47,840. So staff highly recommends accepting the lowest responsible bid of $47,840 that was submitted by Vizius Sewer.
That's, that's great news. Um, anyone have questions for Matt?
It's interesting. If we've used them in the past, like their bid is so much lower. Like, you're sure they're understanding the extent that we need, like what needs to be done?
Yes. We, we did a good job of even breaking everything out. Um, we even broke out, um, clay tile and provided them with a whole sheet of whatever we had. And so, um, there was actually a couple of bids below the city estimate. So one was, uh, uh, the low one and then there was also another one who is also a local one, um, who does, has a contract with Oak Park Heights Pipe Services. Their bid is $58,387. So, um, I did get some, um, those guys are feeling the pandemic here too. So a lot of cities, or a fair amount of cities actually canceled some of their work. Um, and so one of the persons that I talked to, his bid actually wasn't one of the lowest ones, but he thought that maybe some of them would come in low, which is because they needed some work. Um, I did talk to Vizius Sewer. It's most likely that they would fit us in probably at the end of August, but we left it open-ended all the way till the end of the year. So.
Is, are, do we televise every time we clean? Is that the?
So this year, we did not. Um, I went back through and televised. Um, the first year that I was here, um, we televised all the older stuff. Well, about, probably maybe a third of it had already been lined. And so I'm not televising that right again because, um, we probably, maybe we'll skip two or three times of that and then have it televised. But there's no reason to throw away money, um, televising the portion that's lined or anything. Yeah. So mostly what we televise are areas that have clay tile. So like Inspiration won't get televised because they're all plastic and they're fairly new. So.
Any other questions? Anyone like to make a motion?
Uh, I moved toward the bid for sanitary sewer cleaning and televising to Vizius Sewer in the amount of $47,840 as presented. Did I get the number right?
Okay. Thank you. Michelle, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Um, roll call.
Councilor Hanson.
Aye.
Councilor Buckley.
Aye.
Councilor Carlson.
Aye.
Councilor Dahl.
Aye.
Mayor St. Louis.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. That takes us to our city council liaison reports. So, start with John.
Uh, yeah. I had it in, it, uh, we did, Middle Saint Clair Watershed, we did meet, um, last month. I had it pulled up here. Um, really the only thing that pertained directly to Bayport was a, um, uh, the restoration cost share for the, uh, Peril Creek, kind of behind the tennis courts back here. I think this is the second time that, um, they've requested money and the Girl Scouts have been doing the work along with, um, you know, some of the people that have their feet on the ground with that organization. And so, uh, uh, cost share was approved from the Middle Saint Clair Watershed in the amount of, I believe it's $1,200. Yeah. $1,200 for 100 linear feet of, uh, Peril Creek. So, um, that's it in terms of Bayport news. We continue to meet remotely and I think are going to, you know, virtually, um, for a while yet. I know we will not have a meeting this month due to lack of business.
Very good. Thank you very much. Connie.
And the library met virtually and, um, not a, I know Jill covered a lot of it in her thing. The main thing was that she was getting prepared to open, actually this, the 29th last week. And I'm not sure how it went. With by appointment only though. And then they were only going to have 10 slots or 10, you know, sets where only 10 could be in there at one time. Um, and I was going to check with her and see how it went. Have you talked to her at all?
Uh, I'm sure that, I haven't heard that it, uh, how it managed to come out after the speech.
Yeah, I was going to touch bases with her and I hadn't, so I'm not sure. And then the other thing was that she let us know that, um, Janelle Sinclair, um, put in her retirement notice. She thought it was going to be at the end of the year, but I think with all this going on, June 16th was her last date. And other than that, um, I know she covered some other programs in your packet, but that's about it.
Great. Great. Well, Janelle served the city a long time. So, uh, thank you very much, Janelle, and, and congratulations on your retirement. So that's quite a milestone. And so I'm sure that we'll be looking for some new staff when things start opening back up. Okay. Great. Michelle?
Uh, the Cable Commission has not met since January, but we did get an update early June from the administrator, Penny Mailhouse, um, on June 9th. And she said that they are considered an essential business, Valley Access TV. So they have been open, um, as a business, but they have not been allowed to public in. They have completed the COVID-19 Response and Preparedness Plan, like everybody has to do. Um, they cleaned and sanitized the whole facility and keep doing that on a regular basis. Um, they completed, um, an online store. So you can go to VACTV.org and actually purchase. So if your senior graduated this year, they did a virtual ceremony and you can purchase a DVD or actually a, a digital file of that ceremony that they recorded. Um, they also had a senior parade, which they recorded and you can purchase. So as, um, more and more events get filmed, they will be offering those on their, their online store. So make it easy instead of having used stuff to go in or call and order DVD. A little bit simpler now. Um, they've also been working on some marketing materials so people understand what Valley Access TV can do for them. So we're hoping the Chamber will help us distribute that. Um, they do, they're doing some great things like, uh, they do a lot with sports, which of course they haven't been able to do this year, but they produced an academic version of their Ponies All-Access Program, which is their sports program. So they're kind of spotlighting different students' academic achievements and it's, uh, very well done, if you want to check some of that out. Uh, they also produced a Bayport promotional video for us with the Bayport Community Action League. Um, it has over 500 views. I just checked today. So it's a really great video. I don't know if you've all had a chance to see it, but it is on the city YouTube channel. If you just Google, uh, Bayport, City of Bayport, I think, and it'll pop up on YouTube. And you can subscribe too. So anything that gets posted there, we'll know what happens. We also have it posted on Valley Access TV's Facebook, Bayport Community Action League's Facebook. The Chamber, um, posted it for us. Get Out and Try is a local Facebook page, which kind of highlights different activities going on. So they posted it for us. And the ABL Alliance. So it's kind of cool. I don't know. Have you all seen it?
I have.
It was, yeah, it was super fun to make. So, um, most of the businesses submitted their videos to us because of everything that was going on. So it took us a while to get it coordinated. But then we had Jordan, who's here, Simkins, today, go around and, and do some more shoots up just town and the park. and do some more shoots up just town and the park, everything. So that kind of turned out really nice. So thank you for, thank you, Jordan, for doing that. But that's, that's about it. We're, we're hoping to meet either virtually or in person soon, since we haven't met in six months.
It's been a long time.
Yeah.
And John, how about you?
No report, Matt.
Okay, thank you. All right. I don't have a report either. The months seem to go by. Um, uh, just very grateful during all of this, again, for everything that seems to be just moving along and, and serving the community. Um, we've had, you know, new, a new barbecue business open in this process. It's very good. I continue to try to, um, you know, frequent our different businesses and, um, that are, have been open and, and still do takeout if you're not comfortable doing outdoor dining. So, or indoor as it's, um, now available. So, uh, feel, you know, please remember to check them all out. Um, looks like the Minda project's going very well. Um, weather has been quite favorable for us. Um, so that's great. I appreciate what Public Works is doing there to keep that moving. We had, um, an award for Sarah that I'm sure Adam will highlight coming up, but want to congratulate her on being recognized. Um, and we'll have more details in a second, but, um, and then all of our city services, um, particularly, I think our police have been kept very busy during, um, it's rather turbulent time for our society, um, as well as the fire being on standby at all times. So just a very busy time for our staff of keeping building permits and offices moving forward and, and doing a great job in this, um, unusual circumstances that I hope at some point will bring us back to a, a new wonderful normal. So, but in the meantime, if everyone can remain diligent in being, um, proactive in your face coverings and your social distancing and just doing whatever you can to keep it so that our businesses and, and lives can be as normal as possible until things stabilize, that would be really appreciated. I know none, none of us were that comfortable necessarily coming here tonight and being filmed and going to be on YouTube for posterity in, uh, these masks, but it's an important step to take. And, um, it was very good to see the staff and council in person tonight. So, um, with that, I'll turn it over to, uh, Adam to call upon our staff.
Matt, when you go first to me?
Um, Madam Mayor, members of council, as mayor indicated, um, the Public Works Department's super busy too. Um, we've actually regained a couple of our summer help. Um, and so that's helped us along. But we've also seen reduced crews from VSTS, um, which is the sentence to serve crews who usually help us out. Um, so we've had to make up for some of that, um, with the workload. Hydrant flushing has been completed. Um, mowing is obviously always ongoing, especially with the rain that we get. Um, and the park maintenance is, is always demanding. Um, as mayor indicated, some of the bigger projects, um, the Highway ninety-five improvement project, um, uh, we have shifted to the west side of the road. So we'll start working on that side. Um, city infrastructure on that side includes water main replacement, um, some sewer main work, um, then the RFP flasher system and, um, just stuff like that. Um, it will probably stay, um, traffic will probably stay on the west side for at least a month would be my guess. Um, do want to remind everybody too, I believe starting tomorrow, the, uh, the one-way traffic starts, um, south of town. So you can only go southbound. Um, and so that will start tomorrow. Um, a couple of other things to cover, the flower baskets. Um, I'm sure you've seen those through town. They have, um, been gorgeous actually. Um, and we actually doubled them up on Fifth Avenue. And I think they look particularly good up there actually. Um, and so we put them in a few other places. The NJ parking lot has been difficult because sometimes there's cars parked there. So it's difficult to water, even at six-thirty in the morning when we sometimes water. So.
It's because they have good breakfast.
Right. Um, Lakeside Park equipment has been installed and so is the, um, the mulch. Um, so that, and lots of kids playing on that. Um, we did have some wind damage probably about three weeks ago now. Um, we had about five or six trees down, um, in the city. And so that'll hurt our, uh, budget for, uh, our tree budget essentially. So, and the good thing is the street budget is doing pretty well and we'll have money in all three other locations to make sure that, um, we can complete our, some of our ash removal, um, with the DNR grant. Um, John and I are actually doing street ratings this year. I mean, we also hope to do some bridge and culvert inspections. And we're about half done with street ratings. So this will play a role in, um, trying to provide a, a better capital improvement plan on streets moving forward here. Um, and S H is also working on a proposal for a drainage study. Um, if you'll remember back in like twenty sixteen, um, they worked on a, essentially it was a, uh, it wasn't a drainage study, but we identified major drainage issue areas in the city. Um, so this will build on top of that to actually come up with a sort of plan to cure some of our drainage issues, uh, which we have a fair amount of them. Um, and then, um, as John Dillard indicated, the Girl Scouts project, I just drove past today. Um, it looks like they, um, have applied some weed killer in that area, which they always do. Um, then they'll provide or put down another layer of it to get everything dead and then they'll plant, uh, their plants. Uh, the previous years that we've looked at, um, I met with the Matt Downing, the WMO administrator. He's super happy with what they've done in the past. Um, it's coming in real well. So with that, stand for questions.
Any questions for Matt?
Some, um, something to keep in mind when you guys are on boulevards and maybe, um, maybe the contractor or whoever's doing our trees. I forget how that's working. No, but, um, some of the boulevard trees are getting, you know, they haven't been kind of limbed up in a while. And there's places where, and places where some of the residents have planted on the boulevard that things start encroaching on the sidewalks, especially this time of year. Maybe something you guys can be aware of and, and maybe something we sent out as a, um, update to the residents to kind of, you know, keep their stuff. It's great to have the boulevards with great plantings out there, but make sure the stuff's maintained so people that are walking, um, can get through.
Yeah, so.
And corner sight views.
Yeah, yeah, we've cleaned up a cor, a couple of corner sight views, uh, last, uh, week or so. And we do try not to, uh, just because of a fair amount of diseases and Emerald Ashore and Oakwill during the summer, we try not to trim too much. I know that's the best time it grows, of course, and then you notice it. Um, but we try to do, take some notes about where trimming in the fall needs to happen. So.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
Anything else for Matt? If not, thank you very much.
Mayor, council, uh, fire chief, and the police chief and Sarah are all, uh, gone tonight. Um, so I will be giving their reports. Uh, you also have Jill. I'm not gonna give her a report, but, uh, Comper Carlson covered a few of the items and, uh, you have her memo in your agenda packet. Uh, I talked to Chief Eisenher today. Uh, they were really happy. We only had four calls total this weekend. Um, for a holiday weekend, he's, that's the lowest he's ever seen for July fourth weekend. Um, four calls total. Um, so with everybody home, that has taken a hit, not a hit, but that has reduced the number of calls. Um, if you saw in his, his call volume was actually up to eighty-six and three eighty-eight year to date for the fire calls. Um, they did have, uh, two house fires during this last month, uh, that they were successful with both of them, relatively successful. Um, but they were able to, uh, save, uh, the houses and keep the damage low. Um, well, only one was in Bayport, but, um, they also, uh, they've been doing their, they started doing their training. Um, this next month they'll be doing that. And, uh, the fire chief, um, he didn't have a, kind of a word of advice, but other than, uh, you know, stay safe as always. Um, both him and Chief Eastman are very, still very cognizant of the COVID-19 pandemic issues that everybody's seeing. And as the first responders, they are, they are seeing it and obviously exposed. So they want people to remember that we're still, things are starting to open up. Um, but it's still very real. You know, the health, uh, concerns are still very real. Moving on to the police report, um, a couple of things I wanted to highlight, uh, from Chief Eastman's report was unfortunately, uh, both the, uh, Knights United and the Youth Safety Camp are canceled for this year. Um, the Knights United, if, uh, it's something that we, some cities have postponed it to later, like in October. Um, we don't know if that would be possible for us, but it's something that we can potentially later look at. Um, so it's still on the table, but as of right now, it's tentatively canceled and potentially postponed. Um, there, during, the, the police was, were quite busy, um, at the beginning of June, uh, the end of May with all the civil unrest. Um, they did have extra staff available for, uh, those, about a week and a half period, um, as well as they've been doing some extra patrols. They've been very active. Um, they, they have had some success in, uh, addressing some of the speeding, um, on Fourth Street specifically. And, uh, related to the civil unrest, I just wanted everybody to know that the, we did get a couple of questions. Um, our police abuse force policy is available online on the state's website. Um, use the model, model policy from the post board. Um, so anybody can go and check that out. Um, the other thing that, uh, Chief Eastman wanted to mention again with the driving, the distractions, especially with all the construction, uh, you know, pay attention to the road. Keep your eyes off, on the road and off your phone. Um, it is, as of last year, it is illegal, um, but they are seeing quite a bit of it still with people either flouting the law or just cannot break the habit of doing the, you know, don't hold your phone and try to read emails, text, um, while driving. And she had some other, uh, information on that. And then also just with heat, especially this last week, it's been brutal. Um, drink lots of water, stay hydrated. You know, if you start, don't wait until it's too late to either drink the water or get out of the heat. So be safe in that regard. Moving on to the Assistant Administrator Taylor's update, uh, we already went over some of the Landmark Legacy information. So I'm not gonna go over that again. Uh, the Inspiration, the, uh, billing and zoning permits continue. We've, I've seen quite a few of those, uh, just get by my eyes. I don't review them. Uh, but I know the council was notified about a couple of applications. Um, there's still quite a bit of, of billing activity. Um, not a lot of new homes necessarily coming in, um, both the Landucci and the, the MNI homes. Um, there, there's still a couple, but they're not, uh, they're not busy with the new home applications, but the rest of the improvements, um, remodeling, um, other additions, you know, mechanical, things like that. Um, there's still quite a bit of activity, um, going on. Uh, people at home are the projects. So, uh, the other, one of the exciting, uh, news items that I wanted to, I mentioned, and I know Sarah wrote about, was the potentially, uh, the E-City newsletter that we're developing. Um, with, it's been more difficult with everything that's been going on. Uh, but if anybody's noticed, we didn't have a print, uh, newsletter come out in June. Um, it take, there's a, about a three-week lag between when the final version is ready to, it actually gets mailed to residents, uh, through the printing, uh, publisher. And then there's, before that, there's still, you know, coming up with the information and then formatting it. There's a lot of work. It's about a, over a month, uh, lead time for each print copy. Um, we would be able to bypass a lot of that and send out some more relevant timely information, uh, to an e-newsletter. Um, so we'll want to make sure that people are signed up for the email list so we can get people for that. Um, but that's something that we could do, if not every month, every other month. And just, it's, it would be much simpler because we don't have to wait for somebody else to format it and get that all mailed out. This, we would still send out the, the physical paper copies of the quarterly newsletter. Um, but COVID did have a, an impact on the one that we are essentially skipping or postponing. Um, so we want to make sure that we, we can get that information out sooner. So that's, uh, look for that, um, in the next couple of weeks. We've already got the first one, um, just about done. So, uh, sometimes the information comes out so fast that, you know, two, three months later, it's no longer relevant. And then lastly, I just want to also mention the elections are coming up. Um, I'm not gonna go through all the points that she mentioned there, um, but voters are strongly encouraged to vote early in person, uh, with the absentee process or the absentee ballot mail. Um, we are going to be, on August eleventh will be the primary election and November third will be the general election. Um, the June twenty-fourth, there was an email blast sent out for, uh, the absentee ballots. Um, contact the county for those. It's not here at the city. Um, but Washington County has that process in place. Um, the, the staff is still coming up with how the actual polling station will look like. We're working with the fire chief. It will be at the fire station again. Uh, that worked really well. But with the social distancing requirements that have to be in place, um, we're gonna have to kind of reconfigure, uh, that space. Um, there will be plenty of, uh, face masks, hand sanitizers, you know, along with the distancing itself, uh, precautions put in place for that, both, both elections coming up. Uh, and the one here is in, uh, just over a month, the primary. Um, and all of that, all those expenses, those additional expenses will be eligible for the CARE Act, uh, funding. So again, the, with this, the state and federal government are, you know, understanding that we did not budget for the additional expenses. Any questions on really any of the, those three reports, the police, the fire or Assistant Administrator?
Do you, um, get an update? Like, you're saying that the primary election is anticipated to have a voter turnout of ten percent. Will you know about the general election too? Like, so you can anticipate?
Yeah, the county elections, uh, sends the election staff, which for Bayport, Sarah is the, um, elections contact. Um, so she gets that information from them. Um, I don't know if they, typically they have much more general numbers for like presidential election year. There always is a higher turnout than just a off year.
Right. But do they know like how many have requested absentee ballots and how that might affect?
Do you have that data? I don't get those emails, but I can get that information.
No, I, I was just hoping you'd get that information so you can prepare. I don't need to know the numbers.
Yeah, in various, various meetings when I'm with the county, um, and I, I happen to catch that they, they do share on occasion. We've had so many, yeah, particularly every election year, they'll say, they, then they do use that for, um, their projection. But this year they, it's obviously the pandemic, they're expecting only a ten percent. So.
And I think the E-City newsletter is a, is a great idea. Um, we have to make a concerted effort to get those email addresses though, because we have all the mailing addresses obviously.
Right.
But I don't know if it's smart to mail a postcard or a letter or something to everyone to say, hey, sign up for this so you can be on top of things or some, something. And then also we need to be careful that, uh, electronic correspondence is less likely to be read than printed correspondence. So if it's important, I'd put it in.
At least if, at least if there's something new, like if maybe if city hours are changing again, or something that we can immediately get something posted and out there for access and people know where to look for. But I agree, we still have a lot of people, especially in our community, that are not as dependent on technology as others. So, um, I think the physical, um, newsletter is still an important avenue for us. And, and we have a whole laundry list of topics that we've, um, we've come up with. So hopefully we'll get that back on track. But yeah, with the printing, um, and it's just kind of impossible this last, or much more challenging this time. So, but.
The, and just to kind of.
I agree. I think it's both. And especially in our next print newsletter, we need to at least, you know, make a big effort and splash on, uh, signing up.
Uh huh. That would be good.
Right.
Good point. All right.
Any questions about that? Okay. Moving on to my report. Um, the, so the city status and one of the things that obviously no one planned for the pandemic, the, the news changes every couple of weeks. And so with that information, you know, what we were gonna potentially say last week, let alone, you know, two months ago, and it's, it's been, that's probably been the biggest challenge, um, that trying to get that information out when by the time you get it out, it may have already changed. Um, so with that, um, the, as far as the city, we're, the city council again, again saw as part of this agenda packet, and we talked about it last month at the council meeting, um, the preparedness plan, uh, the city does have it in place. Um, if, as you can see in the public tonight, we have hand sanitizer or masks or socially distanced. Um, staff is following those same, uh, guidelines. As far as the, um, public facilities, the city hall is not open to the public currently. Um, it's being, uh, considered for possibly opening up. We're, we're kind of right in between phase one and two, where we're. Uh, considered for possibly opening up, we're, we're kinda right in between phase one and two, where we're, we're transitioning in July into phase two. And uh, there's a lot of cities that they're just not opening up yet. Um, we're. All the services are being provided, and we haven't heard a lot of feedback from people demanding that, I wanna come in now, we are doing appointments. You know, we have people coming in and the staff will meet with them, or, you know, transfer documents, there's even like the building permits. We, sometimes we turn those around, uh, typically someone come into the counter, it's a counter permit, we process it, it'd be, you know, five minutes. Now, it's, you know, maybe ten or fifteen, because there, we don't have an E-City hall, but we'll meet them at the door, and their, their documents, you know, the application if they need. They'll take it to their car, fill it out, or there's, there's a table sometimes out in the hall, or the, just the, and they'll fill it out there, then call us on the phone. Come get it, so it's, it's just, it's a little more cumbersome, but the services are being provided. Um, we've, we've been. It, it's, uh, we've got a lot of positive feedback from people, you know, surprised at how accommodating we are in some regards, but we, we're, we're trying to do our best to make it as. Least painful for everybody, we got, everybody else has enough going on, one more thing, uh, is to get, you know, more challenges at the city. So we're, we're doing well in that regard, I hope. Um, as far as the public works at the fire station, we're, we're not gonna reopen those up to the public. Um, we had very little need for the public to be in those buildings previously, um, right now, uh, at least for the foreseeable future, there's no need to have the public there. Um, as far as this other city facilities, uh, we did start renting out the uh, the beach house and the nature center. Um, in July, those are the enclosed spaces. Um, there, the beach house is still not open to the public, uh, generally, uh, just walk in. Um, that way we can, we can keep it clean for the reservations, um, but they are, they are being rented, uh, starting on July, July first, they started being reserved. Um, the nature center actually is increasing, uh, the rentals, um, that we typically haven't had that much use for it in the past, but. Um, we did have quite a few people reserve that, um, when we made that available, again. Um, also related to COVID nineteen, we don't, uh, we, we don't foresee almost any of the shortfall in the tax revenue. Um, the county did, we actually just got the check today, um, our first installment of the tax payment from the county. Um, physically got a paper check, um, which I don't recall seeing in the past, but I think they've had some changes up there with their uh, electronic payments. Um, so we did, we did get that, and it was only about five hundred dollars, uh, less than we were estimating, uh, Bayport residents either had all of their. Um, most of their accounts in escrow already, um, which is pretty typical, um, or they were able to find time. We, we had very few, speaking of that, we had very few uh, late payments for the utility bill last quarter, and I know there were some, uh, some issues with that. Um, with the staffing change, um, they were given an additional week, and there were some that didn't automatically get the payment services network, the automatic payment. Um, so that was tacked on to the second, uh, the second quarter. Um, I know there were some questions about that, but we've, anybody who had asked, we, we will explain that too. Uh, there, the city staff was not proposing to have a late fee waiver, uh, for those, uh, for the second quarter payments. Um, we gave them one more week to, to do the payment, um, just to get, cause, just to give them a little more, more time to process it. Um, to get, make sure the information's out there, make sure it's all uh, being done. The uh, to that point though, some of the other programs that are being put in place. Uh, with the CARE Act funding is those types of fees, you know, there are cities that are covering either rent relief for some people, which is even a step further. Or, you know, utility uh, bills that they're, due to COVID, they're not able to pay their utility bill for one reason or another. Um, we, we have had very good compliance from Bayport, and so I wanna commend the, you know, the public, um, but that is something that is, is available potentially. Um, the uh, Bayport's been very fortunate financially, uh, we're not very dependent on some of the outside revenue sources that are being hit by COVID nineteen. Uh, we are, we have our tax revenue, which as I said, is already, you know, it's kind of already set, um, uh, for this year. And I haven't, I have only heard that next year, the preliminary assessment was a five percent increase, not for the levy, a five percent increase on market value. For the properties at Bayport, that's from the county. Uh, if you recall, last year, it was in the eleven to twelve percent range. Um, so if there, the increase is a little bit down, but it's mostly due to construction slowing, um, and so that would've been last year's construction. Uh, we are sort of, starting to close out. Um, so with that, um, we, we do exercise caution on expenditures, or, you know, we're trying to not spend money where we don't need to. Um, before we knew that we were able to get some of the CARE funding, we were being incredibly cautious, you know, we were perhaps, uh. Not, I don't wanna say we weren't getting what we needed, but we were, you know, do we really, really, really need to get that extra ream of paper, can we? You know, little, little things in the office. Um, we're not wasting money now, but it, it gives, it takes a little more of the pressure off. Knowing that, you know, we have to go get masks, so instead of making a, a decision over, do we want more hand sanitizer, or should we wait? We'll, we'll stretch it, but now we know, you know, the funding is there. Um, we were never not being safe or not getting hand sanitizer, but. Um, it, it just gives us a little less uh, concern. We had the waste hauler RFP was, uh, released this, this last month. Um, we did get, uh, four notices of intent to submit a proposal. Um, the ones on the uh, we had all three from last year, that's Waste Management, Public Services, and uh, Highland Sanitation. And then Tennis Sanitation also submitted, uh, interest in submitting a proposal. Those are due July fifteenth. Um, so in August, uh, and September, the, the goal is to have the contract available in September, uh, but we will discuss it in August. Um, we're gonna have a big August meeting, uh, we've got, between budget and the RFP for trash, and everything else going on. Um, we may need to have, especially if we're gonna do some virtual meetings, we may need to have more than one meeting, and try to, we don't wanna, you know, six-hour meeting. So we can talk about that. Um. Uh, especially me, I can't turn off my video and just walk away, I'm doing most of the talking, um, unfortunately for you. The, then the last thing we already talked a little, little bit about tonight, uh, was the CARE Act, uh, coronavirus relief funding. Um, again, Bayport's allocation was the two hundred ninety-three thousand, uh, which, you know, there's even in cities, a lot of cities are like, wow, that's. A lot of money, especially for a city our size, and it's based strictly on uh, population. Um, we don't have a, I don't have a running tally, I can get it, but I don't have a running tally of what we've already spent in response to the coronavirus. Um, but it's, it adds up very quickly as well. Um, and there's, it's through the rest of the year as well, so there's still additional costs coming in. That we may have not foreseen, um, so it's, we're, we're still trying to be very uh, cost-conscious with it and. Uh, but we would like to come up with some programs to help the community, um, help the nonprofits, the charities, and we're gonna reach out to the business community and. See what they need, what are they in need of. Um, like I said, we can't give them money for revenue shortfalls, but if they're having a difficulty complying, you know, do they need? We've, we've already given some masks to some of the businesses, if they just didn't have any, things like that, where, you know, we're, we're trying to find the best use of that funds. And anything we don't spend, then we'll, in November, we'll go back to the county, or go to the county, uh, and they have different programs, you know, they have the whole, uh, EDA or the CDA. Um, that they'll be able to, you know, they're more in tune with what businesses or, you know, the county need, um, and then in December, we'll go back to the state for the, the closeout. Um, so I will, that, expect that, the August meeting as well, discussion of, preliminary discussion of built programs. Uh, next, the, as the mayor alluded to earlier, mentioned, um, the Sarah, our Sarah Taylor, who unfortunately is not here tonight, um, she was off. Uh, for the holiday, the, she was nominated and was, uh, selected for the twenty-twenty Minnesota Women in Government Leadership Award. Um, she's been a very dedicated, uh, employee to the city, and she's, uh, you know, a great asset to have. I do appreciate all the work she's done, um, especially in the coronavirus, uh, period, um, she's been, you know, helping, uh, it's been different, so. Uh, she's been here over sixteen years, you know, a long time employee of the city, um, she's, uh. So I'm, I'm proud to have her, and I enjoy working with her, so it's a great honor for her. Um, and to that also, we, we do have a great team. Chief Eastman, uh, back in twenty-seventeen, I was also the recipient of this award, so. Um, it's near the, over here, but I just wanna, I'll commend him as well. Uh, someone from the League or from, uh, Minnesota Women, Minnesota Women in Government Association will be coming to the council meeting, uh, to present the award. Uh, they weren't able to come to this one, um, and she wasn't gonna be here anyways, but uh, potentially, they liked it in person, um, so they're kinda, but they're under the same. Uh, criteria, so they, that's maybe a challenge, but. Uh, then lastly, the city budget, it's July, so the city budget is starting, and we will be, staff will be working on that, we will have a potentially workshop and a budget, first budget meeting for council in August. Um, so look for that, um, we're with the, kind of the new world we're living in, you know, some of our costs, uh, have been down this year. Uh, like fire, fire service has been actually less expensive than last year, because we have less calls, um, but depending on, it, it's hard to estimate what it'll be like next year. Um, if that picks back up, or if it, um, stays down, so we'll be going through all that data and finding out what we need and what we. I ask the council for, and the council can discuss it, so. So, any questions on any of that?
Yeah, well, for the, on the refuge hauler, hauler contract. Uh, it states that you're, you wanna begin the new contract January of twenty-twenty-one. You know, a year or so ago, you didn't wanna do the transition in the middle of the winter because of the equipment and that, so. Are we still looking for something before the snow flies? Are we gonna wait until next spring?
The, yeah, so that's, the, our current contract, as you know, expires December thirty-first of, of this con, of this, uh, this year, twenty-twenty. And so that's the, that's the reason for that date. Um, the haulers that I spoke with both, they, they've, they said. Their contract is better for January, for, you know, January through December every year, they like that for the contract purposes, but they did say that the equipment, you know, it's, it's a more of a challenge. Um, but staff was, was gonna have it just in January first, and we'll have to, we'll have, we'll hopefully have enough time between that transition where we can make it as soon as possible. Um, there's, if you recall, one of the other reasons we were gonna be moving our current contract that we're under, uh, originally expired or ended. Uh, on September thirtieth every year, and so it was Oc, October first start, and that, so it was originally gonna be in October, and then they, they added three, three months. Um, in this last round, so.
So are you recommending that we possibly do it before November, or kind of then?
I don't know that we'll have.
I don't think that'd be possible from the companies, correct?
Yeah, I don't think that they, because they do their budgeting on the calendar year as well, both of them that said, um, and so they, they're in the same process of. They, they'll know by, you know, they'd like to know by September, October at the latest, so they can budget, some of them, they, they buy our equipment or buy more trucks or whatever. Um, I don't know that they'd be able to start that early, and then we also have the, the issue that, uh, we discussed, the council discussed of the. The legal implications of, uh, terminating our contract early.
And then the other question I had was, being the state had over a two-billion-dollar surplus. And now we're estimating that a greater than a three-billion-dollar deficit, you don't know how that's gonna affect our LGA, do you?
I have not heard, uh, the only thing I've heard was, I was on a webinar with the governor, um, about. A month ago, maybe, um, it was, I believe it was Minnesota cities and metro cities, and he's, the governor, which isn't the one who, you know, ultimately decides, other than at the end. He said he was committed to not touching the LGA. Um, I haven't heard, we, we have, the city minister, the city hasn't heard anything. That the LGA was gonna be reduced for this next year. Um, it had been reduced back, I think, twenty-twelve, I think, or the last time it was drastically cut. And it had such a, there were still cities who are fairly recovering from that, but it, because it takes, you know, where do we find that other one? Um, one, one of the things that we, we have been, you know, working towards is being able to, as far as like, uh, the CIP funding. You know, if there's CIP projects that we have to push off because we didn't get the LGA, so we're trying to tie the, the CIP funding to, um, to the LGA without. Of course, without getting, you know, that money we are saving from the tax revenue, so if we have to adjust, make adjustments that way. Um, that's what we've been trying to do, so we're not as dependent on it.
Because I know this year, we had an increase in the LGA because of a miscalculation at the state, which was all in our favor, I mean, when there was a lot of money.
And they were, yeah, the whole LGA, they, you know, some, some groups wanted even more, and then, uh, they did increase it, um, a little, so, but.
I just, hopefully we don't see something like we did in eleven and twelve, or our LGA was cut by, I think it was fifty-two or fifty-five percent.
Yeah, I, I don't anticipate, from what I, what I've heard, and again, nothing was formal, but what I've heard is that they don't, they don't dare, like, they're, they're, I'm not here with the government, you know. Um, they don't, they don't anticipate anything, they just even talk about cutting anything that drastic, because they do know so many cities are, are dependent on it. Um, that they, they know they kind of cut to eat last time.
Thank you.
I just wanted to, um, talk a little bit about the, uh, Sarah's award and just say how proud I am of, uh, living in a municipality with such amazing. Human leaders, you look up here and see three women on the council, a female chief, um, and, and somebody behind the scenes like Sarah, and, uh, that's a huge. Feather in our cap as a, as a municipality, and, uh, as a father of two young girls, it's nice to see such, uh, you know, strong, amazing, experienced women. In leadership positions, so I just wanna make my feelings public on that, so thank you guys.
We're smiling.
Very nice.
Yeah, you can't tell.
Very nice, thank you. Um, any other questions for Adam?
I guess I do have one, but I'm just curious, you know, when you rent out like the inspiration and stuff, do we, we don't set any. Or even the beach house, any guidelines or restrictions on how many they can have or anything like that, I mean, that's just.
They're, 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 they're under the same guidelines that the state would be under as far as, um, groups of people, like how many people, um, meeting sizes. Uh, and so we discussed, each one of it obviously is a little different, not, it's not the same type of event that's there every time. Um, we, we do, uh. We.
Recommend?
We, we, we make recommendations, we give them the list of all the recommendations for a facility. Um, we clean it after each use, and that takes a little bit longer because there's more cleaning that, that we typically haven't had in the past. Um, the, oh, we also, we haven't done a sign of waiver, uh, a COVID-nineteen waiver that the league of Minnesota cities has provided, um, it's, it's pretty common.
So the city is not liable to enforcement or anything like that, it's up to the people that rent it?
Correct, yeah, um, not just with the waiver, but in general, um, but we do, uh, and the league also said that it's probably not necessary to specifically have a COVID-nineteen waiver. But it always helps, um, belt and suspenders, so.
How are we doing, um, down there with our bathroom situation? Is that Matt probably is best able to answer that, um, is it working out?
As far, as far as using the porta potties?
Yeah, is that, have we?
I know that people have asked about the, the external bathrooms on the thing, and why we have porta potties out there, I'm sure it's been on social media and stuff like that, but, um. As we've indicated, it's likely that bathrooms are not opening up this year, so.
Yep.
Um, you can feel one way or the other about it, but, uh, the city just doesn't wanna provide another conduit essentially, uh, for, you know. Transmitting the disease, just like the same reason for the water pump doesn't open, so.
What, how often are they being serviced, and just so to be, for us to be able to answer questions?
You mean the porta potties?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the porta potties, I believe, get serviced once a week, the same as what they have in the past.
Okay.
I know there's been issues, I've heard issues of hand sanitizer, but, um, I can't. I know there's been issues, I've heard issues of hand sanitizer, but I can't have them, you know, they're, they have other places to service too, so it's not like they can be on call all the time they come out here, so. My, my take would be use those as emergency only, I mean, that's what they're, they're for, but we just recommend not even going in those, so.
Bring your own hand sanitizer.
Right, there's precautions that you should be taking on your own, right? You shouldn't be depending on the city for certain things.
Yep. And that's actually mine, Washington County, they, they closed all their beach bathrooms and they do recommend people bring their own toilet paper as well as their, there isn't going to be as much of a shortage on toilet paper now, but there's been shortages. Bring your own toilet paper, your own hand sanitizer and this will ease your own risk. So we're, we're trying to be consistent with that as, as much as we can for the expectations.
Farmers Market, is it, it's open?
It was the second week today, yeah.
Okay, and going well up in Barker?
I heard that the first one did, I haven't heard yet how today went, but yeah.
Very good. I, I don't, I mean, before, any other questions for Adam?
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you. Just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that Farmers Market, just, it's available, just has moved up to Barker, so look forward to that on Monday afternoons into early evening. The park equipment is, is outstanding, so it's, I think everybody's really enjoying it, so thank you so much for getting that all done. And then finally, there's a, there is a 20 mile speed limit in the middle of town now, so just make sure, you know, not, it's, the grass is kind of tall in some of those places where Mid Knot's working, so just, you know, safety first, make sure that you're slowing down. And then finally, there's just been so much going on in the last few months and if we can all just be a little kinder, a little more patient, more respectful and, and appreciative of being healthy and being able to live in a wonderful country. Diversity comes in all forms, opinions and races and everything, but just, we're very, very lucky to be in the United States and we're lucky to be especially in Bayport and our businesses are adapting, everyone's under stress, so just please take a breath and be kind. And with that, I will stand for any other comments or questions?
Well, here, here to that, thank you for saying that, that, and there.
And with that?
Can I just ask if we could all just stay for a couple of minutes after the meeting to talk about our new digital platform and how it's working? Just walk all together, it might be easier than trying to like go, hey, it just might work better or?
Yeah.
Mine worked wonderful.
Yeah.
For the, for the public, we, we are now all moving into this century and we have now been enabled with iPads instead of physical packets, which is cutting down on staff time, it allows for more flexibility, it's very timely, it saves our police officers delivering packets to our homes of information. And it's great, so thank you to staff for making that happen for us as well, so.
And they're part of the CARES Act funding, because it assists with the.
The virtual?
And it's, it's, that's better than paper.
Yeah. For everything, the environment, everything, so thank you. Sure, let's, let's do that, if we can do that legally, just tuck that away, okay? Great. All right, with that, would someone like to make a motion to adjourn?
I'm willing to adjourn.
Thank you, Michelle, is there a second? Thank you, John, all in favor? Aye. Aye, opposed? Moving adjourned.
Can you guys do a meeting, there are people waiting on the meeting, if that's okay?
Still fine.